All right, welcome to City Hall. Tonight is April the 7th. It is official now, I keep saying this month after month. I have been promised by everyone in the Kwas Weather Lab that we will not have any more snow, at least for the rest of spring. We'll call our meeting to order. Before we do that, we have a prayer led by Councilman Larry Henry and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for waking us up and bringing us to another day. We ask that you continue to bless us, bless our families, bless our loved ones, continue to watch over those serving our country abroad, continue to watch over those serving us here locally, and also continue to look over this council and help us come to great decisions for our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Branch?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussy?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Turgeon?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Thank everyone for being here tonight. Obviously, we have some very large topics to talk about. At this point in time, we would accept a motion to adopt our agenda, which has recently been amended next door, switching the order of 231356 and 231357. 57 would go ahead of that. Is there debate by the council on that? Going once, going twice? No debate? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry to get in the motion. First, get in the motion. Okay. Hussy, seconded by Schulte. Now do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and that is unanimous. At this point in time, the Jefferson City Council will take up a motion to accept Resolution 23, excuse me, 2013-57. Is there a motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mahalovich. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Prather. At this point in time, would ask staff to give us a description of 201357, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll do that.
Thank you.
2057 is a resolution accepting the Earhart Group's proposal with conditions. The proposal recites that the council has been in the process of selecting a conference center project that is fiscally sound, advantageous from an economic development perspective, advantageous to the city from the development of long-term urban planning, beneficial to the public, and requires no subsidy of the general fund. It recites again that the council has weighed heavily all the expressions of support, opposition, and assistance they've received from the staff and other consultants and other partners. And this resolution recites that the Earhart's proposal most closely matches those stated goals and should be moved forward to a pre-development agreement. There was some concern about some issues, and so the resolution recited that the Earhart's would, that we would move forward to the Earhart's if they accepted all risk of operating, maintaining, and repairing the conference center beyond the income created by the lodging tax and other incentives, and that under no circumstances would they request a pledge from the general fund regardless of how small the risk. The Earhart's were provided with a copy of this, and that they did accept those conditions. Their acceptance indicated that as long as they had the opportunity to participate in the size of the necessary district, primarily the CID, and that there were, of course, other conditions and things we'd have to meet along the way, but assuming that they got that participation, they would agree to that condition. So this resolution, simply put, moves the Earhart's forward to a development slash pre-development agreement.
Okay. Is there an amendment by chance? Did I hear that across? Okay, that's Bob Brights. Something else as you're doing that? Okay, we'll discuss the main amendment as it is on the floor. Who would like to do so? Mr. Prather.
Well, I've given this a lot of thought, and we all have. And if asked a couple of weeks ago whether I would have voted to move the Earhart's further, I probably would have said no. And stated then I was very skeptical, but anything could happen within the next two weeks, I also stated that. The deal killer for me was when we were, when was the general fund was being obligated, and I had pledged already that no matter how small the risk, I wouldn't be interested. And since then, this special local conference center incentive hasn't taken off the table, and all the ongoing operating risk would be assumed by the developer. So that's a step in the right direction. We have been out at this for almost a year now, a year and a half, and many of us are growing weary of it. And I don't know if I'd want to continue if I had no deadlines in sight. The other side of the coin is that we've been at it a long time, and we put a lot of time and effort into it, and if it can work, what harm would it be to go a little bit further? Well, if we continue, I request that we have benchmarks set during the next six months, and decide then whether or not we want to go into a development agreement. Still, I'm very skeptical. There are many unanswered questions. For me, the easy answer is no. But seldom is anything worthwhile easy. So if we can put these benchmarks in, in the non-binding pre-development agreement, I believe it's something that I can support.
I know that Drew read the resolution, and I still have some questions or concerns about, about the parking, for one. The construction of the parking garage. When we talk about no subsidy out of general funds, that's, the parking is an issue that I have. And then my next question would be, if we move to a pre-development stage, then how much is that going to cost the city? I'm sure there's going to be, I don't know if you can handle that, or that would be outsourced to an attorney, but those two things I have a concern with as it relates to moving to a pre-development agreement with the downtown development. And then the third concern I have, and certainly we can talk about all of these, is that when we talked about the CID and how this district and how large it has to be, coming from, I think it was discussed at one point, going from Bolivar to Jackson and then to the river to the highway. I did have the opportunity to get out this morning and talk to some of the business people downtown, and a concern in which I heard was the fact of if this does passes, then that's going to go over to, to the owner of the property, of course, but then that has a potential of going to whoever's renting that building as relates to that cost. And so the cost has to be passed on to someone. So those are three concerns that I have, and I hope that we can address those concerns as we move forward. But right now, I'm having a big challenge with, with moving anything like that forward.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted me to kind of answer those questions. The easiest probably one for me to answer is the cost, because it depends a little bit on what you hope to get out of the pre-development agreement. For me, the distinction between pre and development's probably not real important. But I think that what we want to do is find out, we want, we want to find out the cost of, the actual construction cost to address some concerns that the Earhart proposal has undersized the size that they're going to need for construction, and then look then at the profit. One concern the council's had is that they've overestimated some profit numbers, so we need to make sure those are good. And once you figure out the cost, which is your debt service against the profit, then you know what the gap is, and the gap then has to be filled by an appropriate size of district, most likely a CID. Now, some of the things are very clear. You know what the, what the property tax abatement's going to be, and you know what the lodging tax is going to bring, but the other things that you don't quite, we don't quite know. So I think you have to solidify what the cost is on the, on the, on the building, on the structure itself, and I'm hopeful we don't have to solidify the cost on the hotel, but I'm not positive about that. And then solidify the economic incentives that, profits, so you can figure out the economic incentives that are actually necessary. So in talking to Matt a little bit on projects of similar scope and size, it's about 2% of the, now, you could argue you could go more, you could go less, but 2%, I think is a decent rule to go up, to get actual hard construction costs, to verify what the actual cost of the conference center's going to be. So if it's the $13.8 million or so, it's somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 to get those real costs. We probably will want an economic expert of our own, that's kind of a, Jack Dillingham happens to be here, that's kind of what he does, or Tom Calico, who we've used in the past, to assist us, kind of looking at their profits, to make sure that number's right. So that's, you know, the ballpark of $20,000 according to Tom. And then probably, we do want some assistance from, like the Joe Laubbers of the world who do, mostly do the design of the CID's. Now, we're working clearly with Earhart's on all this stuff, and that's about $15,000. So I think the exposure is about $285,000 to $335,000 in what we can probably expect to have, to get real solid, good numbers, and at that point, then it's just a question about, you know, as long as we can get the district to make it work, then, then we, you know, get that done, start, start turning dirt, hopefully. And I think that kind of answers. That's my opinion on that question, and talks to folks, and they seem to agree. Now, again, you can argue, maybe you don't want construction costs, maybe the council feels comfortable with it as it is, so we skip that part, that's the biggest chunk of it, but I think enough of you probably have some concerns, we need to address that. Now, I've forgotten the other two. Oh, the parking garage is, I'm not sure there's necessarily an answer, but to build a, we feel like economically, we can certainly build a $5 million parking garage, that's 250 spaces, to, to fix up the housing authority lot, we always call the housing authority lot. That's 1.2 million, it's about 3,000 a space, and the Earhart's, it always indicated that the 250 garage, ideally, they would have liked the 350 garage, but that's just economically, we couldn't do it, and they understood that, so to fill that out with surface parking. And they may not need the housing authority lot all the time, it's something we'd have to work out, but we probably, the other cost there is we need to purchase the housing authority lot, and we've got, I feel okay talking about this in public, because it's been out there for a long time, it's $800,000 to buy that, the housing authority piece of it. So that's kind of the cost on parking. We've got $3.5 million in the parking fund, and we make about $300,000 in profit a year off our whole parking system. Depending on what happens, let's say we had to give up the housing authority lot, that would take us a hit of about $40,000 a year, Matt, is that right? So instead of pulling in 300,000, we'd pull in about 260. So, you know, in looking at the cost to bond the garage, you know, we do feel that it would take our parking fund down to, we wouldn't be building any new garages for a long time. And the biggest issue there is, depending, and the Earhart's have expressed that they're willing to look at ways to get some money back, maybe charging guests of the conferences, not guests of the hotel, or it might be some other ways to look back and putting that back in the system, which I think is going to be needed, because otherwise, we're not going to be able to maintain the capital improvements we've got. And third was maybe the outside source? What was it? Oh, the CID side, yeah. That's something that you have to work out, once, oh, the property owners. There's different ways you can do it, you know, if, if it, it could be that just the residents living there vote, which I've kind of suggested is probably not going to be acceptable to the council, it depends how you draw the district. You're probably going to want either the property owners or the business folks to actually vote on it. But yeah, if the property owners vote, then they can certainly impose that on the businesses, because they're just tenants, frankly, and it would have an impact, so if I answered your question, if not, I'm glad to expound on it.
Yes. Councilman Bright.
Drew, just to clarify, the Housing Authority's lot, what was that acquisition cost?
$800,000.
I did not, maybe I missed it, but did you mention the cost to improve that housing authority lot?
It's the 1.2 million dollars, it's 3,000 a space. So yeah, it's 1.2 million to improve that lot, then 800 to actually purchase it. And it could be, maybe we'd get a better deal, but that's what's always been on the table.
So over $2 million for?
$2 million total, yeah, for that lot.
On the surface lot? Surface parking?
800,000 acquired, 1.2 to fix it up. Two million total.
Next, Carrie.
Thank you. We have a chance tonight to really make such a positive impact on our community if we do the right thing and make the right decision on this. Really entering into a pre-development agreement is the next natural step. We've had two really good developers on the table. Both have been really excellent and outstanding to work with, they've been very accommodating and patient, and it's just time to narrow it down to one. In order to get some of the answers we want, we still have a lot of questions that have even come up tonight that could be looked at in a pre-development agreement. For example, Councilman Graham's questions that were very good, we could make sure that they are addressed within that pre-development agreement. It doesn't mean if we pass the resolution to move the Earhart's forward that we're breaking ground, it just means we're taking it to the next natural step. And we want that step with a timeline, we want to move it forward quickly, but we don't want to pass it over just out of a fear for what could be wrong or what we may be not doing right, because this is right, and we need to really examine it and get it down to one. When Earhart said they would accept all the risk, I mean, that is huge. I feel like, how could any of us turn that down? It's what we've been asking for since day one. We've said, we have the lodging tax, that passed three years ago, we know we have the $9 million, the taxpayers voted, I mean, that lodging tax passed, so we just didn't want the city to assume the risk, and so now they've given us that. So as the discussions have progressed, that's the outcome that we wanted in the beginning is here with us tonight. So why we wouldn't have further discussion with them, work out the details, and then decide whether or not we could move it forward, but tonight, that's the next natural step. As far as the CID, I, I think that it's something we've been trying to get downtown for years, trying to figure out what do we want the CID to pay for. This is definitely something that you would see a lot of excitement generated if you went and, and talked to some of the businesses, they would say absolutely, they would partner with it, just as other parts of town have done their CID's. We've, we're ready to do one, I think the paperwork is ready, we've just held off because knowing that this decision has come up, I mean, there's, there's a rough draft of a CID already in the works, so that shows that there is potential interest. But again, that's something that goes with the pre-development agreement, if, if it's favorable, it works, if it's not, and the Earhart's have agreed to do the work on that CID, we would leave it in their hands to get the consensus and see if that piece fits. So there's also potential partnerships that I'm excited about, that we all are, that we haven't had a chance to fully explore, such as with the state, with possibly Capital Plaza. I mean, those partners, I'm sure are very interested if we could go to them with this next step, even perhaps Parks and Rec or other entities that might be building or looking at different things. We need to talk with all the potential partners in this project, and I think this is the time to do it in the pre-development. When we've come this far, I just don't want to see this council throw it away tonight when we really have potential to get all the questions answered and possibly move forward with something that could really be what, what the voters asked for, it was presented to them in the election for the lodging tax, that it would be in the site that, that it currently is. So it's a win-win with Earhart's accepting the risk, so I hope we can move this forward tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Carlos.
I guess one of the major concerns that I have, and first of all, both developers have been, like you said, Councilman, have been excellent to work with. I guess the main concern that I'm having, and as I was out talking to individuals, they was having the same concern as well, too, and that was the fact that we had asked both developers for their best and final offer. And then, I remember in a closed session, we had asked Drew to go back to the developers and make sure that this was their, their best and final offer. And so we put that into the newspaper so that the citizens could see and be able to compare, to so they could see, say, hey, this is the best and final offer. And for us at this point to say, no, that wasn't the best and final offer, then I just have a concern with that. So that's just, just me, me personally, so.
Mr. Henry.
And kind of piggybacking off of what Councilman Graham had just mentioned, I guess my thing is, what have we been doing almost this year to, almost a year, year, year and a half? We did, we did say we wanted the best and final offers, we thought that's what we got. So now we go in, so now it's, we're at a decision where to go into a pre-development agreement to finally get the best and final offer. I don't think that's, I don't think that's right, quite honestly, because it seems like we wasted our time, all this time. All the closed session meetings we had, all the presentations we had, all these numbers that we had gotten, and now all of a sudden, we're going to go for more numbers, we're going to spend more money. And, and understanding that a lot of this money does come out of the lodging tax, I get that, but just because the money's in the lodging tax doesn't mean we have to spend it. I'm still, I'm still at the point of where I was back in December, there's nothing that, that I think at this point is going to change my mind on that. I have a major concern with this parking issue, I'm not, I'm not for wiping out our parking fund whatsoever, you're talking about possibly bonding for 15, for 15 to 20 years, possibly, and we can't get any savings back from that. And at some point, the parking issue is still going to have to get addressed, we're still going to have to be looking at a parking garage separately from whatever a conference center brings. So I still have major concerns, the numbers that we had gotten, to say at this point where those aren't correct, and we need to, we need to get more numbers and final numbers, well, what did we get at the end, what did we get a couple of weeks ago, like Mr. Councilman Graham said, as far as what was put in the newspaper? So are we lying to the public at this point? Are those numbers not correct? My vote is no on both of them at this point.
Bob.
I, I do have, and I want to offer an amendment to this motion, but I think I'm going to make comments because they're more germane to what everyone else has been saying.
Would it be, did you write your amendment down?
I wrote it down.
Would it be a good idea maybe for staff to make a copy of that?
It would be.
Okay, maybe we could get someone by chance to, to do that while Bob makes his comments. Matt, appreciate it. And Matt, you could put it underneath my code in the copying machine, I've been making a lot here lately.
If anybody can read it, it'll be a miracle. Okay.
All right, Bob, the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, I, I've said many times that I support the mall proposal, between the two proposals, and I do want to put that out there, because there isn't anything on the agenda tonight about the mall proposal, and I'm not going to make any kind of a, offer any kind of a resolution or offer any kind of a motion for the mall, because I know that it won't pass. And so there's, there's no, nothing to be gained by doing that. I still think it offers the most opportunity for secondary growth, I think it, it is advantageous in terms of the parking issue at the mall. I know it has some warts, I know that a lot of members of the council are not comfortable with the idea that the construction will occur inside the mall, that's a big issue for a lot of people, and it's an issue for me. So it's, I do want to compliment the developers, I think they, man, they've been great to work with. They, every time we've asked them to make any kind of adjustment or anything like that, they've done it promptly, and, and if we were to choose them, I think they would do a great job. For me, one of the key issues about the downtown location is parking. And I think that, in fact, I know that I have a great deal of concern about basically zeroing out our parking surplus and then using all of our resources to service the bonds over a 20-year period. And I think that if, if you really stop and think about what, what we're doing when we do that, if we have the results that are anticipated from a conference center, and we bring a number of people to town, and as everyone hopes, those people shop in Jefferson City, and they go to the Capitol, and they go to the, to the downtown restaurants and the downtown bars and what have you, they're not all going to walk to those places, because some days it's raining, some days it's hot, some days it's cold, it's uphill, not everyone's in great physical condition, not everyone's going to choose to walk up those hills. So what have we done? We've, we've just put ourselves in a position where we cannot create any additional parking downtown, and we've just brought a bunch of people to town who are going to be driving their cars downtown and looking for places on the street to park. And, and they're going to be competing with your current customers while you're downtown. They're going to be, they're going to be taking parking spaces that citizens of Jefferson City have been trying to use, and you're not going to have any place for them to park, and you're not going to have any way to solve that problem in the future, because you just obligated all your parking funds for the next 20 years. If we have the need for a new, new parking cart, you know, for the, for the parking, the meter people to drive around and, and check the parking meters, to make sure that parkers are turning over in those spaces, where are we going to get the money? From general revenue, because it's not going to be available in the parking fund. If you have a large repair needed at one of the parking garages, where are you going to get the money? From general revenue, because it's not going to be available in the parking fund. So the biggest impediment, and there are more than one impediment here, but the largest impediment to me is the damage that you do to your enterprise fund for parking. Now, if the state comes along and agrees to pay parking fees within that garage or something like that, that may help alleviate it, I'm not sure about that. But another thing that we don't even talk about is, we currently are using that housing authority lot, and Drew mentioned it, we've got $40,000 in revenue from that. If you make that lot available for the hotel conference center, you just gave up another $40,000 in revenue. Not to mention the fact it costs you $2 million to acquire it and prepare it for surface parking. Parking is a huge, huge issue, and that we already have an issue, we've, we've been asked to build a parking garage downtown. We've just basically, if we go with, through with this agreement, we're agreeing to forego a parking garage for the next 20 years. Does that make sense? It doesn't to me. The CID district, I've got an amendment here that, that I'm going to offer a little bit in regard to that, but I'm not quite as confident, Ms. Carrie- to that, but I'm not quite as confident, Ms. Carroll, that, or Ms. Turgeon, that people are going to readily embrace the idea of that tax. I know there will be some businesses that will, but if we do go through with this, hopefully that will be something that they will do and do it enthusiastically. But the last thing that I want to see is the council put it in a position of looking like they're going out and promoting the tax increase that's going to be required for this CID. And that's why my amendment that I'm going to offer will burden the developer with promoting and educating for that CID. The last thing I want to say about this is I just hope that as a council, we haven't lost sight of why we wanted a conference center in the first place. It's not so we can have a conference center. It's so we can promote growth, economic growth, and tourism in this community. And to me, heads in beds is the goal, not a conference center or anything else. It's whatever puts heads in beds in this community and causes economic growth and opportunity for businesses to grow and provide jobs and provide good shopping locations for our folks. And I'm afraid that we've gotten so caught up in this debate about whether it's going to go downtown or go at the mall, that we've lost sight of the fact that our original RFP asked for a proposal so we could evaluate the proposal and see if it made economic sense or not, and to see if it would be within our means to pay for it. And I think we've gotten away from any consideration of what it costs. We're so caught up in let's achieve getting it that we've forgot about the limits. We forgot about can we afford it? And, you know, I'm for a conference center. I've been for a conference center since I was chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce in 1993. That's a long time to be for a conference center. But we couldn't get it worked out then. We couldn't get it worked out in 2008 when I first came on the council and there was a proposal on the table. We couldn't get it worked out when the next proposal came along a couple of years later because of cost. And I'm not for a conference center at any cost. I'm for a conference center that makes economic sense.
Councilman Scrivener, on some of your comments, and you had a lot of good points, and you mentioned the huge issue of the parking, and Councilman Graham, and I know that's a concern of all of ours, but at the next stage, there are things related to parking that could be positive that we haven't explored. I know it was mentioned at a meeting recently that Earhart said in some communities where they've had conference centers and a downtown hotels in the downtown location, they've had to do valet and it works, and we've all gone to conferences where they do that. If this council said, well, it ought to be over here instead of over there, and then they'll valet and then they can, I mean, there's options, and they mentioned that. I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just saying that there are options that we haven't explored. Councilman Graham, when you mentioned, you know, here they gave us their best and final, and they did, and I think that no matter what best and final we get on down the road in the future for many developer, we're still going to have some tweaking. It's not a set in stone. When we were looking at both, we have a viable one on the table that we can move forward. But parking is a piece of that, that we might change the solution around. With parking, there are other options where perhaps the conference center could be built upon parking, if it were two levels of parking and you build it on top. Perhaps the state would partner. Drew mentioned tonight about a fee for parking. So there are so many partners with parking and moving parts, and we can narrow in on that if we really focus on it. We've never truly focused on just parking with one developer and what are all of our options are. Because even though it's huge, it doesn't mean it's insurmountable. Communities do this all the time, and I'm confident we can, too. It's just going to take some extra work and creativity to do it, but there are a lot of options. So I wouldn't want to throw it out just for that. I'm just saying I think that's something that we can make it happen. And I wanted to mention, too, since I'm the liaison to the city's convention and visitors' bureau, I do have a letter from Diane Gillespie, director, which I emailed and passed out a hard copy, and it's public record if anybody would want to see it. But I just wanted to focus back tonight again on, like Councilman Scrivener said, what are we making the decision for? And the letter just is comments regarding the need for a facility in Jefferson City. There's really nothing quantifiable. We know we're missing out on a lot. They don't target the new market. They don't target people that we don't have the space to accommodate, so, but we can say that we are losing business every day. We're losing conferences. Diana shared that she is getting calls and we're losing them to many different cities that she cites in the letter. But just to focus back on why we're doing this in the first place, and Councilman Henry, I understand your concerns as well, but I would say, don't feel like we've wasted a year because it's taken a lot of time to do this, but we do have a good viable offer on the table. My concern is when you mentioned, we don't have to spend it, meaning the lodging tax, I feel like the voters have spoken. I can't imagine telling the voters who passed the lodging tax for this specific purpose and the hotels that are collecting this every day from their guests that we're not going to spend it and look at other options when that's the reason this whole tax passed. They had given to them, the voters of our city, a lodging tax specifically to be used for a conference center. And so I wouldn't say that it's, that all has been lost. If we can at least move to the next level tonight, then we have the chance to explore some of these options. And on the CID, it's been mentioned a lot tonight, well, we don't think it's going to work, it's too complicated, we don't think we have the support. Well, how do we know until we ask? And the Earhart's are going to ask, and let's ask that question. Let's have that conversation. And if it doesn't work, then we know the outcome, but we have got to ask. I can't see us throwing it all away. It just doesn't make sense when we haven't even asked the question. Thank you.
Councilwoman Turgeon, I appreciate your comments as well. But my comeback to that would be, at what cost, though? I understand what the lodging tax is for. We all understand what it's for. But what do we do? Keep spending and spending out of that for a process that we've pretty much found, and in my mind, we can't afford this right now. We simply can't. That's how I feel about that. There's nothing at this point that's made me change my mind in that regard. There's too many ifs with this. Well, if this happens with parking, if that happens with the state, there's way too many ifs for me, and I'm just not comfortable even moving into a pre-development agreement incurring more costs. Granted, it does come out of the lodging tax. Granted, that's what that was for, that's what the voters, by the way, a slim margin from what I, from, I didn't, I wasn't here at that point in time, but a slim margin at that. So it wasn't like it was a huge, it was just a huge majority decision. So with that being said, that's what I meant in terms of the lodging tax. I'm, you know, I know what it's for, I understand that, but just to spend out of it and keep spending out of it, I'm not for that.
For clarification, CID, that's a 1% tax, is that right? And then also the TDD, Transportation Development District?
Development District.
Is that an additional 1% tax?
Yes. The proposal is for those, for there to be those two taxes on the Capital Plaza, the new hotel and the conference center. The 1% tax, it would just be a larger CID in a larger area.
So the CID would be a larger area?
Yep.
With 1% sales tax. And then the Transportation Development District would basically be the more immediate area?
Yes, the two hotels and the conference center.
So 2% on top of our, and our tax rate right now is .0725? Anybody?
I'm sure that's right.
Carrie, you're collecting taxes. How much, Carrie, how much do you charge down at the store now, right now?
I was thinking it was 7.225.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. .07225. Okay, I was just wanting to clarify some of those numbers. Thank you. I want to offer my amendments now before somebody calls for the question or something and I don't get a chance.
I'll second that.
And I know that Mr. Schulte has something he wants to say, so if we could hold off maybe debate on this, on the amendments, but I'm going to, I guess, I have four items here, and what I wanted to do was, and I'm not sure I even know where the, let me find the resolution and tell you where I, I want to insert this after, after the first three whereas's, I guess. Let me find the resolution real quick, and I'll tell you where it needs to go. Sorry about that. I should have been prepared.
Bob, while you're looking, are you replacing the two that says the Earhart Group will accept the risk of operating and maintaining? That was number one, and this is number two, is the Earhart Group under no circumstances. Will these four now replace one and two, or are they in addition to one and two?
No, this would be, this would go after five. Okay? I guess. Yeah, it would go after five. Let me read this real quick. It would go after, yes? It'd go after number two. Oh, I'm sorry. It'd go after number two, after the last whereas, council authorized, city staff during the negotiations and so forth. After number two, I would propose number three says, "The developer will work with staff to identify a CID and/or TDD district of the size and scope needed and to be responsible to educate and promote development of said CID and/or TDD district to the businesses therein." I just added that part. That's not on your copy. The businesses therein is added. Number two, "If state and/or Coke County contributions are anticipated by the developer, the developer agrees to be responsible to negotiate with state and county for said incentives." Number three, "The developer agrees to assume all risks associated with operating losses that might be incurred from ongoing operations." Number four, "The developer will agree that said pre-development agreement shall be for a term of six months." I'll offer that as an amendment.
Mr. Prather is the second. Okay. Discussion on, can I call it Amendment A, Bob, just for?
Yes.
Out of Eagles. Okay. Sir, discussion on Amendment A. I have a question for the maker. Bob?
Yes.
When you say in three that the developer will work with staff to identify a CID, so on and so forth?
Right.
Is that, is that only staff, or will the council be meeting?
No.
Throughout this process? Are you going to put it in the hands of our administrator and almost interim city administrator? Sorry, bad habit. But no, he's the city administrator, but our city attorney. It's been a long time since I called him that.
What this amendment anticipates is that the developer will need the staff to be able to understand the size and scope that is required, because they're not going to have the sales information and tax information and so forth to know how large of a district is going to be required. But once they know what size is required and what the boundaries of that CID is, then it will be solely up to the developer to contact the businesses therein and educate them and encourage them to vote this tax on themselves. It will not be the responsibility of the council or the staff to promote the CID.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification. Rick.
I think this amendment improves this resolution. I appreciate it being offered, and I'd support it to be passed on so that whatever your vote is on the final resolution, I think this strengthens that. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Amendment A? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
Nay.
Hussy?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Nay.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Clerk, what was that official read?
Six-four.
Six-four. Okay. Now we will continue discussion on Resolution 201357 as amended. Mr. Bray.
I'll refer to my prepared comments now. I don't think this process should have been, should be this difficult. When the square blocks are not fitting in the square holes, to me, that sends red flags. Imagine trying to put together a puzzle, only to find pieces are missing or pieces are from other puzzles. If this project was meant to be, it would not be this difficult, and we would not be divided here tonight. Projects can and should come together more smoothly than this. It's taken too long, it's been too difficult, it's been too frustrating, it's been too disappointing. Nothing has fallen into place with this project. Common sense tells me this project is full of warnings and red flags. Even so, we are here talking about moving this project to the next phase. I believe that would be a mistake. Also, factor in the significant amount of subsidies needed to make this project work. TDD, CID, TIF, and any other revenue sources. I don't have the stomach for all those new taxes right now, not to fund a project that does not want to come together in the first place. I cannot advise the 5th Ward or the community that this is our future conference center project. I do believe, I absolutely believe and support, a conference center is in our future, but not now, not this one. It's still early. It's the third year of the 25-year conference center lodging tax. So we have time. We have time to be patient. I want a new conference center, too, and we have time to learn from this experience. I do not believe we should spend any more staff time or public money chasing this project at this time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Next.
Sean. I would like to hear from the maker of the resolution as to his thoughts on why to proceed with a pre-development agreement with the Earhart's.
Well, I feel strongly about the need for a conference center, and I feel strongly about the need that this is the best deal we got on the table, that we haven't ran its course yet. It may not succeed, but it is before us now. We have two options, really. One is the downtown Earhart's proposal or none. And so I'm asking, as I spoke to all of you, I could verify that all of you are treating this $9 million as it is your own money. You're good stewards of your public dollars, and I trust your vote tonight is all the same. We're all trying to do what's best for the city. Last night I met a gentleman, and I don't think he knew I was on the council, I'm not sure how this came about, but he said, "Feste lade, lente," which means make haste slowly, meaning that activities should be performed with a particular balance of urgency and diligence. If tasks are overly rushed, mistakes are made and good long-term results are not achieved. I don't think, all due respect, Councilman Henry, we didn't waste time. We're doing our due diligence to spend $9 million as our voters would expect us to. The conference discussion started two years ago for me, and astutely, our mayor, after the transformations vote, wanted to bring our community back together, so he started focusing us. And he had four town hall meetings around town, and this is a summary of those. In the town hall meeting, it was asked, "Do you support the idea of a conference center funded by the lodging tax with a public-private partnership and scaled-down version that does not require any additional funds?" not require any additional funds?" I'm just, just curious, how many in here went to one of the town hall meetings? Looking around the room, okay? Seventy-eight percent--
Arthur, weren't you at one?
Seventy-eight percent supported that statement. That was my introduction to what we should be doing with these four projects that the mayor was bringing the community together on. Having that, I convinced more today than I ever have been that it takes a public-private partnership to make this thing work. It does not work by itself, one nor the other. The consultants report, the Garfield trap, and then reconfirmed by Charles Johnson, said, confirm the need. Our CVB says we have a need. He had a methodology and a research that defined what a successful conference center was going to look like. They're projecting 96,000 visitors in the first year, 240 events. That's, but they also projected a operating deficit. And I quote from the, from the report, "Balance, because the facility will be operated as part of a hotel, some savings in staff and marketing can occur. Therefore, reducing the operating deficit, it is responsible for the hotel developer to incur the risk associated with this project, so as to guarantee zero liability to the city. Furthermore, it was concluded that the deficit reduction can be achieved by allowing the conference center hotel operator to manage the facilities, the conference facilities." So therefore, the city has no liability and doesn't have to run a conference center. The concluded, a conclusion by the develop, by our consultant, said both developers were great developers. He had no problems with either developer, and I have absolutely heard nothing negative about our developers. We had two great options, and I respect them both. And the concluding comment was, "While the Capitol Mall site is easier," and it is, Mr. Bray, Councilman Bray, brings up, "This is hard. This is very hard. The pieces aren't quite fitting together." And our consultant told us that'd be that way. Our consultant said, "From the economic development standpoint, the downtown location would be the better long-term strategy for the city." This is, in my view, based on what we're facing as a city, the loss of some jobs, almost becomes an economic development imperative. Downtown location, I believe that downtown location is what our voters voted on, evidenced by paper clippings from that time. And I plan, any other plan other than downtown conference center, to me, would put at risk our, our, our public trust. Not that that couldn't change, but we'd have to gauge it differently. Location is close to our major attraction, we're not trying to compete with Branson, St. Louis, Kansas City, entertainment, mechas. We are, we are what we are, state, the seat of state government, and that is our ace in the hole. Adjacent hotels exist, investments done in the area, the majority of meeting planners, ourselves, of course, agree that that's the way to go. So if we want, and I believe we can achieve it, it's within our reach. But I think the stars also has to line, and that goes back to Councilman Bray's. We do great things when we work together. Think about the, what happens when the state, the county, the chamber, and the city get together. We create the Fourth of July celebration that we have in downtown Jefferson City. No better in the state of Missouri, I would, I would almost bank. What happens if we line those stars together to create a conference center? To work out some of these details. I would like us to enter into a non-binding pre-development agreement with Airhearts that would identify the, and this is some repetitive, CID district, size, scope needed, develop primary designs, provide a firm estimates on parking land, leverage the best possible deal we can get from the state, address the floodplain through engineering, allow us to gauge public support, address other key issues of this council and the public that we hear, and conclude it within six months. Back to the statement from the gentleman last night. Make haste slowly. If we can prove within a reasonable doubt that the project is economically feasible, minimizes risk to the city, provides economic development returns, moves forward in a timely fashion, and addresses your concerns, why would we not enter into an agreement, a development agreement, a real development agreement? We can break ground on a development agreement. We're not breaking ground right now. I'm going, this is my concluding comments, so you don't have to listen to me again unless you put me on the spot. I think there are some game changers out there. The downtown association today saying that they would support a CID and work for that. We have a city administrator seated that is, has a lot of experience and could be there on, on target to cross the Ts and dot the Is. We have financially successful developer that is a CPA that's putting his money online to say it can work. He says it will work. Him and his team, I trust their numbers. I think we've got to dive deeper, but I trust him, especially when it's his own money at They agreed to complete the pre-development contract within six months, and they have further reached out by agreeing to take full advantage and full risk, requiring no subsidy from the general fund. To me, that statement is golden. This is the game changer. Their risk. They're reaching out to us, and as a first part of a good partnership is that they will go halfway with us. This is just wish you won. If they're willing to make this reach, what are the other issues that we can work with? If not the Airhearts, then who? If not now, then when? I respectfully ask your support for this resolution. I think this may very well be the most important vote we make as a council. I hope it's not no. Let's take a peek behind the curtain and see what we come up with. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sean?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rick, for your, for your explanation. I have some prepared comments as well. Based on a careful evaluation of the two proposals, and understanding and knowing that some additional work would be required, I personally find that the farmer's proposal is to be the most advantageous and palatable. However, I fully understand and acknowledge the lack of support by the council in pursuing their proposal further. During several town hall meetings, and Rick, thanks for the introduction for my comments, during several town hall meetings, our marching orders from the citizens were communicated, in my mind, very clearly. And while seventy-eight percent of the folks voted in favor of a conference center, in my mind, they clearly communicated that we needed to live within the means of a lot, live within the means of what the lodging tax would support. I made a commitment at that time to the voters, and I plan on honoring that commitment. The additional resources needed and the extent of incentives required to make the Airheart proposal work is not acceptable or in the best interest of the taxpayers. During one of our closed session meetings, the city's financial advisor stated, "Sometimes you just need to know when to walk away." For me, the time to walk away is now, so I will be voting in favor of the resolution declining to move forward with either proposal. As commitments of additional resources and incentives are explored, careful considerations should be given to the impact and potential encumbrance those commitments may have on future tax-related issues brought before the citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Carlos?
I guess, Councilman Mahalovich, I just have two questions, and I guess my first question is, why wasn't this said earlier? And then, number two, do you actually think that this pre-development agreement can be done in six months? And then, I guess, my last statement, I just want to piggyback what Councilman Shulte had said, and when we started first looking at, at this, this conference center. And I don't know if everybody can recall, the 126-page document that we received with the 10 signatures on it per page, which is over 1,200 signatures stating that they support the mall as well, too. So that was my statement, but those, going back to those two questions, I'm just still concerned about why this wasn't said earlier, the things in which they said they would be willing to do as relates to the risk, and then the second part, can this actually be done in six months?
Go ahead, Rick.
I, I sat across the meeting with some of the Airheart team, and what I hear from them personally, and what I know from them, from what people have said, I think they're very trustworthy. If they say that they can do it in six months, I trust that it could be done. If, I mean, I wouldn't even mind if we said that we didn't see significant progress in that six months, that we could withdraw it. That could be a part of our pre-development. The, the ball's really in your court, to design the pre-development in a manner for which makes you comfortable, because it is just peeking behind the curtain, to see what else there is, what other options. Do you think, that the question was, are we changing the game when I, when the, myself and the two other sponsors ask this question of the Airhearts? I don't think that's changing the game, that's starting the, the nudge, it's a simple nudge. And the offer could have been made to the farmers, should somebody have done that and put a resolution, that would have been fair enough. But that's not what's in front of us today. So I ask that we just nudge this further. I think this is not the only issue we're going to deal with. We got risk, we got parking, we got other things, but that's going to be the next thing we find out. We haven't wasted time, we haven't wasted money. All this could be used in, ensure that you don't have gone down a road that, that is a bridge too far.
I called a question.
Second. Uh, let's see, first and second, go ahead.
I rarely ever speak on this stuff, but I got to tell you, I think calling the question without everybody having a chance to speak is probably a bad idea. I mean, I understand the point is just to, that you feel like we've made a decision, but you got at least one other councilman who wants to say his piece, and I think it'd be kind of, not, not great to cut somebody off, I guess.
Councilman Hussey?
Thank you. I thought the mayor was looking at me, I was going to start talking, and he said, "Jim, Ken, they sound familiar." I've stayed quiet tonight. I feel like I had a lot to say back in November when this issue first came to us, and we kind of had our first official vote on it. And I think back to the last five months on that now, and I kind of wonder what changed. I, I heard that night, the reason to go through the past five months was because we needed clearer numbers from the Airheart Group, we didn't feel like their proposal was sufficient to our expectations. And if anything, that evening, there was some vocal support from those that have spoken tonight for, for the mall proposal. But it felt like we moved it forward that night to, to give ourselves some more time to have those questions answered. And I guess to be here five months later and still be saying we have unanswered questions is somewhat frustrating and disappointing to me. I thought we had best and final, and the way I looked at that was, this is what it takes for us to do this proposal as presented to you. And I get the concept of development agreements, and I guess it just doesn't feel right that everything is still negotiable to that point. I, I, you know, you got one developer that came and presented, and that's what it was, another one that is, is still kind of moving target on some things, and that's somewhat concerning. You know, the Johnson report, it says 96,000 visitors, 100,000 visitors, you know, one thing that frustrated about that report, and Mr. Johnson never would answer my question, was, that's not net new. That's taking into account who's currently already in the community. And so, it's not to say that the new, new facility is going to instantly bring an additional 96,000 visitors to this community. That always bothered me that that was sort of the approach taken, as if we're going to be swarmed. New events, but that's going to pull some existing events from one facility to the next, and I know I'm getting, and so, if you want to hang your hat on that particular point of the report, you can't disregard the fact that he says this facility is not going to turn a profit, because to me, that becomes contradictory. You know, what, what other parts of the reports of these consultants are going to say don't match? I mean, he paints a snapshot, he shows us certain things. Now, I'm reading the letter from, from Ms. Gillespie at the CVB, and yeah, I, I think what she's saying is, I could go out and market the facility to groups that I can't market it, but I don't read in this letter that says it guarantees business, and I know that she wouldn't say that, because you can't say that. But at the same time, you know, we've pushed a little bit at times to say, what is the right size, and how big, and, and all of these questions. I feel like we know the same answer we knew 12 months ago. The lodging tax of nine to 10 million dollars buys you 127 rooms and about 20,000 square feet. I think we knew then that wasn't big enough, that's why we asked the developers to see what it would take to go larger, we pushed, we pushed, they both worked well to come back to say, here is the incentive package that is required to, to make that happen, and we've gotten uncomfortable with it. To say something is the biggest vote ever, for years to come, this will be the vote that defines the council. I think it's the biggest vote ever, probably until the next vote, we take on something. That, that I don't believe in declaring something is bigger than it's ever going to be. You know, I can picture, yeah, I have concerns about us being exposed in, in a pre-development agreement. I think there are risks. Councilman Mahalovich says that, that a developer has taken all the risk, I think there's still a lot of risk to, to the city in this process. You know, and, and there's a few of us that weren't involved when the original RFP went out. You know, I, I think that maybe we set ourselves up for some of this in that RFP, that, that, you know, I think, thinking through that now, all of us would probably say, we'd do that a little differently to do the study after we did the RFP. You know, I'm at a point where, to me, not much has changed since November. I made a motion then to, to reject both, and it was said that night that, you know, well, what's going to change? I, I think that we're in year three. The voters in passing this lodging tax, you know, what they were shown three, four years ago in that campaign, yeah, it was a, a facility downtown. I don't believe they were told in the campaign that it's going to take you another 15 million dollars of public investment to make it happen. I've looked at the pictures, I've looked at the news stories as well about that project in general. I, I think there was ballot language that encouraged them to, to increase the lodging tax for tourism purposes. I think we can still make something happen that can be a quote-unquote, you know, game changer for this community, but I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, after this process, that we can't afford what we think we may want, and that we just have to figure out what we can afford. And to say that the next logical step is to enter a pre-development agreement and keep on moving the target, I, to me, we set it out in an RFP, we've worked for a long time, this is what is in front of us. If those proposals aren't to your satisfaction, say no, and, you know, tomorrow's a new day, and guess what? We still have a 4% lodging tax dedicated for the purposes of tourism. It, it could be that the conference center comes back around and, and we find something that we can afford, that partners with all these entities still, that makes the most sense for the community. To me, tonight, these, these two are just difficult to move forward.
Anyone else at this point? Rick, can I say something right quick?
I'd like to say--
I, I have a lot to say tonight, and this is a very heavy address to make. When the two proposals came out early on, I supported them all. Kirk, Rob, you both know that, the city knows that. Former Fourth Ward Councilman, Ms. Carolyn McDowell, behind you, knows that. And I said at that point in time that the mall was the best business model in front of us. And I also said that for several reasons. A lot of the reasons being that, in my eyes, in that area, that flat land, all the above, growth could take place. growth could take place very, very quickly. I also said on several interviews that if we supported downtown, we could make downtown work. Mr. Johnson said the same thing. He said the mall, I think someone helped me, I know we have a lot of experts in the room when it comes to Johnson's words, but I think he said the mall would be easier, and I think he said the downtown could happen. What was his exact words, Rick? Is anyone else remember?
I think he said it had more air.
More what?
Air.
Air. Well, he told me off the record that it could be done. And I asked him off the record, and maybe even in these chambers, I said, "What is the difference to the traveling community, whether it's downtown or at the mall?" And he says, "Really, it shouldn't be a lot, period. You may have some transportation issues." But as far as people coming here, it makes no difference to the people coming here. Who it makes a difference to is us. And to me, I don't think tonight should be about east side, west side versus downtown. I think the true argument here is us against them. And when I say us against them, it's us against Springfield. It's us against Chicago. It's us against the lake, against Columbia, Kansas City, St. Louis. I could go on and on. That is who our true battle is tonight, is with them, not us. And for too long during this process within our community, we've let this become about us, about us, east side, west side, downtown. There's one thing that a lot of people may not realize, and that is that a mayor breaks ties. Some mayors break ties before a vote. Well, I guess tonight's a different night. I think we owe it to our children, and I think we owe it to ourselves, to make our city the best it can be. And truly, in order to do that, I do not see six months being a huge obstacle to overcome to see if Rick and others are right, that we can make this conference center happen. If we can't, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, "Let's leave the room, guys. We're out of here." But for now, some of you guys who played poker with me, right now, I'm all in. Let's get this done. Please vote yes tonight. Sorry, I still got the mic yet. Question's been called by Mr. Branch and seconded by Mr. Bray. All of those in favor of calling for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Roll call, please.
Bray?
No.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
No.
Hussey?
No.
Mahalovic?
Yank.
Prather?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Scrivner?
No.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Six to four. And that resolution dies at that. Let's see, at this point in time, we have Resolution 2013-56 on the agenda next. Motion to approve? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Helfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't belabor it too long, but this resolution declines to proceed with either conference center proposal. It recites that the council's been engaged seeking a proposal which is fiscally sound, economically feasible, and benefit to the public, and similar to the last resolution, it weighs heavily the expressions of support and opposition from the public, its partners and consultants, and recognizes that it's year three of the 25-year tax, and concludes that it declines to move forward with either conference center proposal at this time.
Unless it's amended. Okay. Discussion. Mr. Bray, I think this was your-
Yes.
-your motion, sir?
Given the straightforward language of the resolution and the discussion that's already taken place, I wonder if we're ready to, if it requires any additional discussion. I have no more discussion to offer at this time.
Any other discussion on Resolution 2013-56? Discussion? Seeing none, debate? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Wait a minute.
I think I probably speak for several people sitting here, and maybe this seems counterintuitive, but I plan to vote for this resolution, but it doesn't mean that I don't want a conference center. It's that I don't want the proposal as presented.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
No.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
That passes 9-1. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign.